Is it good? All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley, here. Trustee Connor, here. Trustee Malinsky, here. Mayor Petrich, here.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. And a second. Okay. Any corrections?
Yeah, I have a correction. For the the fitness thing. It's at sixty-five thousand in there, should be one sixty-five. The amount that the cost of it.
What, trustee Connor?
It was, it was one sixty-five.
Connor, it should be one sixty-five.
One sixty-five? A hundred and sixty-five, yeah. The fifty thousand is okay, though?
Yep.
Any other corrections? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications and general question period for members of the community. Do you have anything you want to address right now? This would be your time to speak if you wanted to.
No, it's a shame, but I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for coming. A report from code enforcement officer, you have his report. Are there any questions? I've answered them as best I can. As you can see, he's been pretty busy. No, no questions or comments?
No.
Anything you want me to share with Chris?
Good work, thank you very much.
I will tell him that. All right. Here's my report. Good evening. We have had a beautiful fall. With winter right around the corner, I do have a few reminders. The recreational fire pit permits are no longer in effect. That means that no campfires or other kind of burning are allowed in the village, per the village code. In the past few years, we have lifted this ban and allowed small campfires between the end of May and the end of October. A reminder that the parking, that parking on village streets from 2:00 AM until 6:00 AM is not allowed during the snow season, extending from November 1st to April 1st. It is essential that roads be completely cleared of snow and parked cars make that impossible. On a similar topic, please remove your trash cans as soon as possible after garbage pickup. We are fortunate to have a sidewalk plow and try our best to keep the sidewalks clear of snow. Trash cans in the middle of the sidewalk make this job very difficult. I appreciate your cooperation in these matters. I am happy to announce that we have taken possession of a new plow truck. This project was begun over two years ago when I wrote a grant to fund a portion of it. That grant, which was awarded along with a small loan and savings that we had earmarked for this purchase, allowed us to buy this vehicle. I remind you to slow down when you see the plow on the roads for the safety of everyone. We will be hosting a tree lighting ceremony this year at Pocat Park on December 12th, which is a Sunday, at 5:00 PM. Hot chocolate will be served and Santa and maybe Mrs. Claus will have gifts for the children. In addition, there will be a parade of lighted vehicles beginning at, I'm going to say 6:30. I know it's happening, I think it's at 6:30. I wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving. May you be surrounded with good food, family and friends. Thank you. Reports from the trustees. Nikki?
Our trunk or treat went really well.
Yeah.
There was a constant steady flow of kids for at least a half an hour.
Oh, yeah, for seven minutes.
Yeah. The child could they count, counted, he said one.
Two hundred and thirty-six, two hundred and thirty-seven.
Yeah, so that's good. Yeah. And it was a nice day.
It turned out so well.
The pumpkin decorating contest at the library, I believe I saw twelve pumpkins there, so they did have a few participants. They did have to reschedule due to rain. Not sure if that was an issue for, you know, those who wanted to attend. And there were multiple winners, they did multiple categories for the pumpkin carving, uh carved pumpkins. This Saturday at two o'clock is our paint and set fundraiser for the library. It's thirty dollars per seat. And part of that money is donated to the library to help with upgrades. And to go along with the tree lighting, we have the Children's Christmas event, which is Saturday at 1:00. And we'll do the candy cane hunt at 2:30.
Okay. So 1:00 and 2:30.
So I guess. We're looking for candy cane donations.
We have some.
I'm sure there are a few, maybe.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, still? Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll have, yeah, I'll have a few activities for the kids to come down and it's free.
And we'll use the greenhouse for anything indoors, right?
Yes. Is that it? I'm still working on the book club for the kids. And we may put together a tech night for seniors. So we'll gather a few who have some knowledge in computers, apps, phones, tablets. And we'll, you know, just teach them how to use different parts of the whatever they have, whatever they bring in, you know, if they have questions or need help to clean it out or organize it. You know, there are a few people in mind that are willing to help, so.
Sounds good.
And that's it.
Okay, thanks. Tom?
Well, yeah, again, the trunk or treat, I thought went really well. We had seven different groups, I believe, handing out candy, which was nice.
Yeah. There were a few.
It was good seeing the kids with their outfits and even some of the older people.
Yes.
It was a good day.
Yeah.
I'm glad we did it. And thanks to Tom for helping me out.
You're welcome.
In our booth. The, unfortunately, that M V V fitness corp is nonexistent now because of the cost that it would be for the village, which really wasn't very clear when I originally spoke with them. So speaking to Tom, maybe the town next year can try something or maybe work together on that.
I think we'd have to do it.
Yeah.
It's a joint function, a joint endeavor. So, yeah, it can be applied for again.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, because that's a yearly thing they do, I'm just not sure when, but I can email her and find out when that's when they're gonna start that next roundup. And our game, game day went pretty well. We could have had a lot more people, but the people that were there enjoyed themselves.
Yeah, it was a great time. It's a lot of fun.
So we were probably there for an hour, fifteen, twenty minutes, maybe. I'd like to probably do another one. I'm thinking maybe in January, because it's gonna get, starting getting too busy.
Yeah, yeah.
For maybe, maybe middle of January or somewhere around there, so we'll talk about that more. And that's all I have.
Great, great, thanks. Tom?
Okay, we'll start with the blood drive that took place last month. It was low. Of course, if you remember correctly, I told you I forgot to
Yeah.
go before the meeting. We only had ten donors. But there were several people that were out of town that saw me later, so, I mean, that's part of the reason. I wanted to thank the crew, Mike and all the men for the paving and the shoulder work. I think did an outstanding job.
I agree, it looks beautiful.
Oak Street hasn't rode that well in a long, long time.
Yeah, and South Street, South Street is just beautiful.
Yeah, I haven't been down South, I bet, yeah, actually, I've seen it from that app, but I haven't been down it. Mary, I want to thank you again for the minute to do an outstanding job. Every time I review them, I'm like, that's a lot of work.
Yeah.
I know, I've done them for KFC and it's a lot of work, and you do an outstanding job, thank you.
Thank you.
Water board, so, report is this close. It's all formatted. It's pretty well complete with the exception of the town assessment. We've had some corrections to be made in regards to data, so we got that done today. So I'm really hoping to close that soon. I was hoping for the 12th to sign off on it, it might take a few more days now, because it's a lot to review and I don't want all the members to go review it, because it might take a couple more days to get out. So, it's close, I think the summary gives you the gist, when we did the interim summary, I think you had the gist of what's going on. You might see a few more details. Some interesting data that, in regards to our loss water.
Okay.
Okay. And, as you all know, I, I was elected as town supervisor.
Oh, congratulations, I should have said that in my report.
No, that's okay, I don't really want to do a formal goodbye until next month, but, you know, I need to let you all know that I will be leaving the village. And I will be just partnering with you down the road, it won't.
The village is in the town, so.
Exactly. And everybody knows how I feel about that, so, we've got a lot of work we can do together. In regards to the appointment, I know there's a couple of people that you're looking at, Janice. Please involve the board members for the final input, I should say, because a lot of times we know or have worked with these people or et cetera.
Yeah, definitely.
So I hope that, I hope there's two great things. I know a few people that we're looking at are, are good, good people. They're in good shape.
Yeah. I agree.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. A report from the clerk treasurer.
Everyone has their October expense and revenue reports.
Does anyone have any questions before we go on to the warrant? In terms of the report, the detail of expenditures?
Well, I did on the general fund, is that why?
Yeah, so, is it in regards to the chips?
Yeah, I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, it always looks so bad.
Oh, because it's in the negative?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I just.
I know it's allowed to be in the negative, but.
The total's not.
No, it's, yeah, that's, it's just one of those strange counts that can be in the negative because we get reimbursed on it.
Right, you didn't mention that last morning.
Yeah, yeah, it's just when you see that negative there, it's.
Yeah, so we put in for half to be reimbursed, like, I think it's like sixty-five thousand, so we actually have like fifty-five thousand left to roll over for next year.
Okay.
We're trying not to deplete it.
No, no, I agree. It's, uh, it's great to have a little rollover, because you never know what next year's gonna bring in regards to the chips. And then the maintenance equipment, that's the plow truck, I assume, right?
Yes.
Okay. So overall, the, the total, A5110, is that fourteen point six percent? So, I mean, that's how I have to look at it, it's like, it's still okay.
Still okay, yes. Presentation of warrant.
We have additional invoices for a three thousand twenty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents for a total warrant of ninety-eight thousand seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. That's because we need to finish planning for the snowplow. Because we finally got our funding.
But would the invoice, that's not, that's included, the invoices be added?
What's that? The new snowplow? It's in our regular invoice.
It's on the regular.
It's in the regular.
Yeah, so I saw that, it's in the regular warrant.
Yeah.
But you also have these additionals, right?
Yeah, three thousand twenty-nine dollars and sixty-two cents. Which makes the total warrant of ninety-eight thousand seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. Which includes the seventy thousand that we have to pay for the snowplow. That's why it's so high.
Sir, let's, let's, let's put a motion out there and then we can discuss it.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the warrant with the additions?
Second.
All right, so, so discussion.
Yeah, let me see this here, I got the wrong date, it's the wrong.
Oh, you got a wrong one, too?
Yeah, that's why I'm so confused. Yeah, I had a wrong one, I got eighteenth, uh, October.
Oh, oh, okay, last time's.
I don't know why it was on the desk.
So the reason it's so high is this, you know, overall is the seventy thousand nine dollars for the, the plow.
That's what I was looking at.
Well, yeah. Who would have questioned that?
Well, no wonder you were confused.
Well, at least there's a reason.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other, anyone have any other questions? One thing that I need to look at again soon, Juanita, is that compare the, the lighting costs now that we've got the LED lights. I'm not convinced that they're lower.
I agree.
Which was, you know.
Tree lights is lower.
Yeah, I just want to compare it and see, hopefully it is substantially lower than we thought. I always think those bills sting high in the field. And I might need to look at that for the next couple of weeks.
Okay. I'm gonna do, I just realized that we have to make a transfer.
Oh, okay. Okay, we should do that before we.
Yeah, we're going to, to transfer, um, we have to transfer seventy thousand to A5110.2 to cover the cost of the snowplow.
A5110.2?
Yeah. Do you see where we are? We have to transfer from the fund balance to cover.
Yeah, so it's from, from the from the fund balance.
Because we had to put our, we, we have our funding. But it's gone into the revenue account, so we have to.
Take the fund balance out of general fund?
Yes. Put it up.
Does it need to be the seventy thousand nine dollars? The exact amount?
No, it doesn't have to.
Okay, so we, so we need a, a motion to transfer from the fund balance.
Yeah, I make a motion to transfer seventy thousand dollars from the fund balance to general fund to A5110.2 for the plow.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Okay, I assume there, are there any questions or discussion on that part? I actually have two motions out right now, so let's do the roll call on the first one. Uh, not on the first one, on this transfer first, before we approve the.
Okay, trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Mayor Petrich?
Aye. Okay, now the other one is to pay the warrant. We have that motion on the table, so is there any other discussion or questions on that?
On the warrant, no.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Mayor Petrich?
Aye.
Okay, and now, and we have one more, two more other bills to pay, which are coming out of the water project fund. But I just feel like it's better to approve them here and.
Just for engineering?
Yes. We have one to cover Barton Lujudis, which is fifty-five thousand six oh seven fifty for the work on the water line replacement. And we have to pay OREC, which is bond council, eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Eighteen hundred and seventy-five?
Yeah.
You want to do them separately?
Ah, yes.
So, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion to pay fifty-five thousand six hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents to Barton Lujudis, it's out of the project funds?
Out of the water capital project fund.
Water capital project funds. This is to do with the water line.
Water line replacement.
Got a second, please?
Second, no.
Nikki? Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Mayor Petrich?
Aye.
Okay, and then the other one is to OREC.
Which is bond council.
Yeah.
For short, short-term funding.
Okay, so I make a motion to pay eighteen hundred and seventy-five dollars to bond council. Again, that's out of the water project, capital proj, project.
Yeah.
Second.
Discussion, questions? Roll call.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Mayor Petrich?
Aye.
Does that catch us up on all the bills?
Yes, yes, it does.
Great. Report from the superintendent, Mike checked out a report. I don't know if you really had time to read it.
Yeah, I, I have. They're always super busy.
They've been very, very busy.
I'm glad the water project started them. The chlorine.
Yeah, so there's good progress on that tank.
And the generator.
And there's also good progress on the generator installation, which is what we really, yeah.
Do we have a tentative date for the electrician?
I don't know. I would say there's a tentative date, like next week or something, but I don't think there's a, he's coming on Thursday. He's a little vague.
Is he, is he running the conduit as well? I know some of the conduits being reused, I think.
I think so.
But they have to run a new one to the new plant.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I mean, yes, that is correct, but I'm not sure if they're doing that or not.
Okay.
So you can see the new, the new grinder arrived, was installed. I mean, some big things are getting done, the plow truck's finally here. The streets are looking good.
Hydrant flushing has started, we're gonna hold it.
Yeah, yeah, right now, those other things just have to take precedence, even though it's getting cold.
Where does this mean the, the trucking? You know?
Which, what's that?
Is that the one over here?
It's like the third building.
Pine and Church.
Pine and Church?
Oh, yeah, right by Greg's house.
Yeah.
Across the street.
Or they tore it up before.
Yeah, and this, yeah, and the curb is
Yeah.
crazed and it's a sea of mud that every day on my walk, I make sure I don't step in.
There's some of our water.
I know that's some of our water. Any other questions or comments?
There was a main break up by, by my place last week.
Oh, yeah, they were, they were, were working on Prospect.
I didn't realize that was happening there.
Yeah, it wasn't a, I think it wasn't a main, but it was a, a lateral, yeah.
It's enough that shut down three or four properties.
Yeah.
I'm gonna repair it.
Yeah, it's unusual that way.
And as I can see here, there's a thank you to the town for helping with the shoulder work.
Oh, gosh, yeah, they were such a big help.
Yeah, it was really cool when I saw them up there doing it together, that was nice.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah. It's really good. All right. Can I go on? Okay. Correspondents?
Correspondents to Champlain Fire District regarding snow removal agreement. Correspondents from attorney Thomas Murnane regarding pre-trial hearing for Doug Powers. Correspondents to William Austin regarding refrigerator in the yard. Correspondents to Steve Domenel regarding old furniture in his yard.
Okay. Under new business, election notices of offices to be filled. Let me go ahead and read this. Twenty twenty-two elections village of Champlain, whereas the next village elections for offices for the village of Champlain, New York, will be held on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain must designate by resolution and publish offices which are to be filled at such election and the terms thereof, be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined the following offices to be filled and to be voted thereupon with the terms of such offices respectively noted as follows. Trustee, term two years, trustee, term two years. Be it for the resolve that as required by village election law number fifteen dash one zero four, parentheses A, parentheses, whoops, parentheses three, parentheses A, notice of village election shall be given at least four months prior to election date and that the office to be voted upon be included in the notice. This resolution shall take effect immediately. You have a motion?
Second.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Trombley?
Aye.
Trustee Connor?
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky?
Aye.
Mayor Petrich?
Aye.
I believe you all have a certification of unpaid taxes that you need to fill in and sign before you leave tonight. I don't know if there's any discussion on this. Is there anything to add, Mary?
No, not really.
I have two appointments to make. I'm very happy to announce that John Favreau has agreed to serve on the planning board. And so we welcome you. Very excited that you're looking to get involved in the, in the village. So I, I thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah. And the other, the other appointment is to the zoning board of appeals and Gregory Martin has agreed to serve on that. So, two great citizens that are going to work with us. Really, really appreciate it.
Thank you and congratulations. And to you too, Greg.
And we'll get some information to you, I think, do we have a packet of information? Yes, and I'll, I'll give you links to, there's some trading, online trading for the planning board, so you get some general idea of what you're doing. Thank you, I appreciate that. Great. As I mentioned in my report, we are going to have the tree lighting. The, the plan is
Sorry.
That's fine. The plan is to have it on Sunday at five at Pocat Park and we'll have the traditional tree lighting with Santa and hot chocolate and then I contacted the Champlain Fire Department and they're willing to put together the list that they used last year for the parade of lighted vehicles. They're going to reach out to all the people on that list and we'll have the parade following that, so people will, at 6:30, people will have time to go home or to stay on Main Street and watch the vehicles go by.
When's the date again?
The 12th. It's a Sunday. It's different than what we've done in the past, but we talked to Robbie Roberts and we wanted, we really, really wanted his truck. And he is so busy. But he said he would save the 12th for us.
The parade of vehicles, is that just down Main Street?
I think I'll do what we did before, which is we, we did, um,
Did I do one?
We did Prospect, Main, Church, and then, I think, came back down Elm or, or did I go on Pocat?
I thought it was started at Elm, no?
It, it does start at Kimpecks, but, and they gotta, they'll come back that way. Gotta think, oh, I know what it was. So turn the other, they're gonna go backwards, so that out of, they're going to, out of Kimpecks, they'll turn left. Go down the back way, they'll go down Pocat and they'll come down Prospect.
Oh, okay.
And then they'll come into the village.
I think that's different from last time.
And then they'll go up Church and go back down Main. I think that's what, I think that's about what it is.
And that, that is at six?
Thirty. Six thirty, I'm thinking we need an hour and a half between the beginning of the tree lighting because I want Santa there and he's also in the parade, so.
That would, yeah, that would give people time to go home.
That would give people time to get home.
To watch from their dry place.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. That's, that's the plan.
Okay.
Yeah, but the thing is Robbie parks at the park, so maybe people won't go home.
They, they wouldn't really have to.
No.
Really, I mean, they could stay right on Main Street and watch it from there. Yeah, just takes a little while to make them live around, but I don't like to leave out too many streets.
I said we sat right here last year for that.
The Northern Tier Recreation Trail Resolution, we already approved a motion, but I was asked The Northern Tier Recreation Trail Resolution, we already approved a motion, but I was asked to write a resolution, so I did. And then we all need to sign it, and I think just into the record, I'll go ahead and read it. Resolution for the naming of the Harry J. McManus Northern Tier Recreation Trail, whereas Harry McManus began teaching at Northeastern Clinton Central School in nineteen sixty-eight and spent decades educating thousands of students, and whereas Harry McManus was an active public servant in his community, serving as trustee and mayor of Rous's Point, as well as a council member and deputy supervisor of the Town of Champlain. And whereas Harry McManus was elected as Clinton County legislator from Area One, Champlain, in twenty eleven, and became the chairman of the legislature in twenty sixteen. And whereas Harry McManus has always valued listening to different viewpoints, consensus building, and research prior to making decisions. And whereas Harry McManus cares deeply about the North Country, and in particular, the Town of Champlain with its villages of Champlain and Rous's Point. And whereas Harry McManus worked tirelessly to obtain the funding for this trail. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees, take great pleasure in naming this trail, the Harry J. McManus Northern Tier Recreation Trail, and herewith express sincere appreciation for the immeasurable contributions that he has made to our community, and I'll ask each of you to sign this before you go. Old business, the only thing we have listed is the property on the Perry Smalls Road. Mary did a little more digging in our file and saw that we already have had it surveyed in a relatively not too long ago.
Was that when Greg was there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, the thirteen or fourteen.
Thirteen or fourteen.
It started in thirteen, and we got it surveyed in two thousand.
Okay.
So it doesn't really make sense to spend that money again, we're only talking about six, seven years later. So we really can proceed if, if we want to put it on the market, just keep in mind that, I'm sorry, I gotta refer to my notes. That it has to be sold for fair and adequate consideration. I believe it's assessed at thirty-eight, and the survey put it at twenty-five thousand. We have discretion in determining how we wanna sell it, we can do an auction, we can do a private sale, we can advertise, as long as we get adequate consideration. We can put it on eBay, we can do it however we want, as long as we get what we think is a fair price. It's up to this board to determine.
Well, I would think we should put it on the market for at least what it's assessed for.
Ass- assessed, thirty-eight?
Yeah.
Would you wanna have a, a minimum, or is that your minimum, thirty-eight your minimum, or would you wanna say, you know?
I said at least, I mean.
I think you're referring to it as an asking price.
Right.
So if someone offers thirty, you would say no?
I'm not saying that.
It was surveyed at twenty-five.
Yeah, the survey said twenty-five.
How long, that was a while.
It was actually, the appraisal was, was twenty-five, not the survey.
Yeah, when was that done, Mary?
That was done about the same time.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the property's gone up. And if it's assessed for thirty-eight something, property is usually at least, go on the market for that or more.
Whatever you, whatever you feel, if we don't get anyone to bid on it, then we just decide to do it again, or leave it, or, I mean, it's not going anywhere.
I agree, it's an asking price.
Yeah. And how do you want to advertise this?
It's a good question.
There are communities that are advertising these things on eBay, and you get somebody from across the country who bids and pays for them.
Yeah.
I don't think a local ad in the press Republican is going to generate an offer of thirty-eight thousand or not.
No, but in fairness, we probably should do both.
We could do, yeah, we can do it anyway we want.
In fairness to the local community that might not be searching on eBay. Who knows, maybe there's somebody that's.
You could, you can do it several ways, you don't have to just do it one way.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying, in fairness, we need to do it locally as well.
There's a cost to it.
Yeah, there is.
The percentage on eBay, something.
Yeah.
Percentage of the asking price?
There's the sale price, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, they put anything on eBay, yeah.
What's the percent, if you had any idea?
For that, I don't know.
I don't know about real estate.
Yeah. Something to look into, so we have numbers.
Do you want me to look that information up and just bring it back next month?
If that's the case, maybe we should ask a little more than a thirty-eight, whatever, maybe forty or something to cover the extra cost.
You've been putting it in paper, right, that would, that's a fee?
Yeah, that cost, I'm not sure.
Hundred or so, I'm sure.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Maybe a little more.
Yeah, hundred or two thousand.
Well, you, do you want me to find that information out and report back? On the percent that eBay takes and the cost for the ad, the press?
You can definitely reach a lot more people.
Mm-hmm.
Those who are really looking for property.
But if they take, you know, one or two percent.
Right.
Out of that much money, that's, that's.
That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money, so then we would raise the price accordingly, I would say, right? Okay, why don't I look that up and report back, is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Anything on electric vehicle?
I've let that go because I don't know if they've renewed the new, the one program ended in October, and I don't know if they've offered a new one.
I heard something that they're gonna have a really large rebate on electric vehicles.
Through the federal, the new, the new federal program?
I'm not sure through where, but it was a very sizable amount, fifteen thousand.
I think it's likely.
Yeah.
I just was reading about that new infrastructure package, and that they're really going to push electric vehicles. Yeah. Yeah, we should hear more about that soon, yeah. Anything else?
No.
All right, motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Motion, please. Thank you, everyone. Don't forget to sign your unpaid tax form. Thanks so much, Joanne.
Well, thank you.
I hope you found it interesting.
I enjoyed it.
Oh, good, it's so nice to have someone here to.
For surveying.
Oh, absolutely.